Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's Pittsburgh Public Schools, Public Hearing. Tonight is Monday, October 21st. As we get started, I wanted to just make sure everyone is clear on the process tonight. Ms. Erica Candy will moderate tonight's hearing. Gandy, it came out. It was Gandy. I know. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and there's only one speaker per registration. You may not share your time with someone else or give your registered speaker number to someone else. Speakers will be called one at a time. As your time begins to wind down, the microphone will blink with 30 seconds to go. And those who are not able to attend tonight were able to submit their testimonies in writing. Those testimonies have been forwarded to board members and will be shared along with the video for the public record tomorrow on the district's website. Our stakeholders can view the public hearing by clicking on the link at the top of the homepage. And as we've done the last couple of months, the full recorded video and all of the testimonies, both spoken and written, will be added to the website usually by this time tomorrow. So with that, we will proceed to our first reader, and I will turn it over to Ms. Gandy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And our first speaker of tonight is Julia Dixon Earnest. Our next speaker, Jeffrey Dixon Earnest. We'll continue to move on. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Camper.
I have followed the public hearings regarding the unfair treatment of former Montessori teacher Ms. Stephanie Lapine by Principal Kelly Meyer. Throughout my 41-year career with PPS, I too was subjected to talks of principals like her. In December 2023, Ms. Stephanie Lapine was removed from her classroom by Kelly Meyer. After many, and I emphasize many, attempts by the parents slash guardians, Kelly Meyer did not offer an explanation for Ms. Stephanie Lapine's removal. Ms. Stephanie Lapine was cleared in February of 2024 but was conveniently transferred to another school. Why was Ms. Stephanie Lapine not reinstated at Montessori? Why is Kelly Meyer not being held accountable for the unfair treatment of Ms. Stephanie Lapine, the only lead Black teacher at Montessori? Carrick High School has a very small percentage of Black teachers. I quote, "Study after study shows achievement among students of color rise if they are taught by a teacher who looks like them." Yet, the percentage of Black teachers working in public schools is around 7% nationwide. And this is from the publication Word in Black, July 5, 2024, "Black Students at Carrick Matter." Computer applications should be a mandatory business elective for all incoming freshmen. During my time at Carrick, some English teachers, CTE ITL, and CTE director have indicated the importance of the class. Freshmen are not getting the necessary skills in middle school. When it is time to do a project, some of them are lost. While at Carrick, I have helped students many times navigate through the necessary software to complete their projects. Quite often, teachers require students to do projects that utilize Microsoft Word, PowerPoint, and Excel. These skills are beneficial to students beyond high school. I'm done.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Chewie Wong.
Good evening, everyone. On 4th October 2024, as the boys, as the high school soccer boys were in the midst of giving their best for every game in the Whipple tournament, they suddenly woke up to the news that they had been dropped from the Whipple tournament. The emotional trauma and stress on these boys were real because suddenly, for no reasons or explanations, everything they had worked hard for for the last two months was taken away from them. While Ms. Karen Arnold has apologized for her inadequacy in communications, her continued and complete lack of community and stakeholder engagement throughout this whole saga has been infuriating. And even up to today, there's still no concrete plans on what it means to play a city league and how you will impact all the other sports and the teams within PPS. This was further evident when she only gave the soccer team the playoff schedule at the last minute on last Friday. She provided a schedule that was clearly unfair to the teams without seeking prior feedback and opinions from the teams. From 4th October up until last Friday, there was ample time and opportunities for her to provide clarifications, guidance, and say engagement with the stakeholders. Sadly, none of that has happened, and this is despite numerous emails and requests from parents for more information and clarity. Therefore, here I am today to seek your support and endorsement to create a PPS-wide athletics committee that involves the AD, the school ADs, the coaches, the students, and their parents from across all the sports. This is particularly critical at this juncture because many other sports across PPS is impacted by this PIAA rule. And many of them, like us, have questions. For example, we only have one lacrosse team in the whole district. What is going to happen to them if they can no longer play in Whipple? Questions like, how are we going to get more competitive if we, how are we going to get more competitive if we cannot play within Whipple? And there's a maximum of six schools within the district. How can we ensure that the teams have equity and continue access to resources like buses for the games, transportation, and access to couples for the games? And the elephant in the room, the question is, is not playing Whipple the best and ideal for our students? As a district, we need a detailed discussion on this. What other options do we have? Are we really doing what's best for the kids? And since this impacts all the sports across the district, it is pertinent that we hear from every team, their thoughts, opinions, and we come together and come up with a plan that progresses us to a better state of athletics for the boys. Fairness, equity, transparency.
Thank you for your testimony. Next speaker is Karen Slough.
Help. I just want to thank all of you who are here. I know that if you're sitting here, being here tonight, you've got a helper heart. And I've been kind of meditating on and appreciating the helper hearts that fill this room. And like, just thank you. Like, thank you. So last month, when I spoke, I ended on the word help. And I want to be so clear that this was a real heart-wrenching request. The topic that I spoke about was discipline matters being handled by racial segregation. And since I brought that up last month, that pattern, two other incidents unrelated have happened at our school, one in the upper grades and one of the lower grades, where the response to discipline challenges have been segregation. So again, help. If there is help, I know you've heard a lot from Montessori parents. I know you've heard a lot about Montessori. I fear we've monopolized too much of your time, and I have actually regret about that. And yet, in that, I haven't gotten a clear sense of where there is help to be found. And what I've, I've brought my rug a couple times to talk about just, we're sweeping more and more under the rug. And it feels like when I go to school, with none of this ever being acknowledged, that we're just pretending that everything is great and we're okay. And it breaks my heart. I'm sincerely asking, could someone reach out to me and let me know if help is possible? Particularly about restorative practices, to have more options for discipline issues that aren't just segregation. Because I know the district can reach me. I have been leaked documents from the district that exonerates Stephanie Lapine. I have heard rumors that I know really aren't rumors about the serious, really kind of uncomfortable misbehavior that is in Principal Meyer's personnel file. But I haven't landed on any way that sharing such could be helpful. I don't see those things as things that help. And so I've kind of said, well, let me go back again to restorative practices and asking for that work. To just go over this, our family's been engaged with that work for over 15 years. We lead a free monthly workshop drop-in at Home with Library every month for the last eight years. And I did the PPS training in 2008. So I'd love to start with building more connection, with building a healthier school culture, and Stephanie Lapine would really help too. Thank you. I appreciate your helper hearts.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Tamara Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone. I'm new to this whole process. As a matter of fact, I'm not even from Pittsburgh. I live in McKeesport. I have custody of my grandson, who goes to South Hills Middle School through McKitty Venta. My grandson is a 13-year-old autistic student, and his attribute is stemming. He is forced to stay on the school van for two and a half hours before he gets home. He goes to South Hill Middle School, they pick up everybody and drop him off. Then he has to stay on the van till they go to Carmel, which is dismissed an hour and like 15 minutes after South Hills Middle School. And he does have a current and active IEP. I've spoken with multiple people from the Pittsburgh area, from Pittsburgh School District, and I get the same answer. Oh, that's such a long time for him to be on a bus when no one has offered a resolution. And like I said, he has a current and active IEP. He's on the, on the, on the school van for two and a half hours. That's too long. He's, and it's affecting him. You know, it's a detriment to his behavioral development and emotional health, and it's making him self-conscious and anxious because there have been multiple occasions where he, when he arrived home, he had to make a beeline to the bathroom because he had to sit on the bus for two and a half hours, I'm sorry, school vans for two and a half hours. He's not permitted to get off to use the bathroom, so he sold his clothing on several occasions. So that's my complaint. And like I said, I've spoken with multiple people from Pittsburgh Public Schools. Like, I've spoken with Kim Zangrilli from Transportation, Kevin Lewandowski from Transportation. I've talked to his teacher, Ms. Bellage. I've talked to his counselor, Ms. Concanon. I've even spoken with Dr. Freoni. Everyone has the same thing that, oh, that's too long, that's too long, he shouldn't be on there because for, you know, because he's autistic and his attribute is stemming. And if you don't know what stemming is, he can't sit still. And at one point, he's going to be labeled disruptive child because he can't sit still. And for two and a half hours, that's, that's just too long. That's, that's why I'm here, to get help. I'm asking for someone to help, help me find a resolution for my grandson to get home in a timely manner other than two and a half hours. When I say two and a half hours, he's dismissed at 2:40 PM. He doesn't get home till 5:00 PM every night. And I'm not exaggerating. Like I said, that's because another school's involved. They go to the other school, they drop off all the kids, and then they bring him home last, which is not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Christina Ruggera.
Hello. I am an Alder Rice parent of a student athlete, and I'm asking the board to hold the superintendent and director of athletics accountable to provide all students in the district with same meaningful competitive athletic opportunities other students have. Due to a PIA constitutional change passed in May 2023, PPS schools are prohibited to participate in leagues of other districts and their postseason tournaments, which was allowed for years previously. This rule was only enforced midway this season, effectively wiping away soccer and tennis teams of their records and efforts this year due to a school challenging Alder Rice's tennis teams' participation in WPIL matches. Only after this incident did the director apologize for failing to provide this information to PPS schools, coaches, students, and parents. No coach or team knew about this rule prior to the season. Yet, the PPS athletic director sits on the PIA board and learned of this issue almost two years ago. This change was first proposed at the board's December 2022 meeting, and at that time, allowed for an exception to have District 7 teams participate, or teams from Section 8 to participate in tournaments of District 7. Yet, as soon as this issue came to the PIA board, she should have have notified our district, understood the implications for PPS students, and, but she did not. She voted yes twice on this prohibition in two board meetings in February 2023, in which the exception was removed and ultimately approved by the PA Board statewide May 2023. At any point, did she make people aware of the significant change? No, she did not. Now, there are substantial consequences for student athletes that do not appear as being addressed with any urgency by the district. This year, Alder Rice Boys Team was eligible for the playoffs in WPIL, the most competitive district they can participate in, yet they were banned halfway through their season. Now, their only meaningful record in competition is against one other team in Section 8 City League, which is Obama, as both are Division III. Even worse, the Alder Rice Girls Soccer Team are in Division IV due to higher girl enrollment and have no other teams to play in Section 8. The director claims an independent competitive schedule for Alder Rice and Obama can be created, but please understand, if these games are scheduled, these students will likely have no home games all season where parents and friends can see them play. No other high school will schedule home and away games with a school in which those games are meaningless to their record and don't impact their standings. In addition, each high school only schedules one or two non-Section games for their entire schedule. At best, Obama and Dice will have a handful of games to play, and those schools will demand in exchange to host those games. This is already the case with Pershier, who has no home games and never plays at Couples. These students deserve to have the same opportunities as other student athletes who play football or basketball. They put in hours of practice, and not being able to perform in front of their classmates and family is terrible. These students at Pershier, Obama, and Alder Rice deserve to have meaningful schedules and competitions. And I ask you to hold the superintendent and the director of athletics responsible for letting these students down this season and demand.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is David Att. We'll move on. Our next speaker is Lauren Att.
Good evening.
So I'm still four. And also...
Whatever you want, buddy.
What did I say again?
You could say you like Ms. Christine and Ms. T.
I like Ms. Christine and Ms. T at my school, and they're my teachers. And also, my school is fun. And on a long day, it's actually a legger day.
Okay, good job. Can I talk now?
Yeah, and say, and I have, and I have short days too.
Okay. Good evening. I'm here again to make, tonight to make comment on the lack of a virtual option for the, for participation in this meeting. The district allows virtual participation in decisions about our children's education when it comes to people with roles that they deem important enough. However, as parents, we're not afforded that privilege. You've heard me say that. I'll say it every month until it's changed. I don't have anything new to add to that because it's just the problem. It's just a problem. It's not right. Because I don't have anything new other than that, I reached out to some parents who weren't able to make it tonight. One in particular was at Children's Hospital today because their child has pneumonia. I guess tonight's meeting just wasn't important enough to that person to make it here. Sarcasm aside, one parent, Katie Ranklev, asked me to tell you that she wishes you would veto the entire plan and start fresh with a goal of increased enrollment and community buy-in. Rather than emulate cities that have closed schools, we could join the cities actively working to boost public school spaces. With that, I'll leave you. Please bring back the virtual option. Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Allison Shira.
So this district has one essential directive: to provide each child with what they need to achieve academic excellence. And as Mr. Udine astutely pointed out, this mission was nowhere to be found in the ERS proposal. Their proposal seems to primarily be concerned with counting butts in seats. And as numerous parents have already pointed out, the capacity data they used was deeply flawed. If the underlying data used was inaccurate, how can you hope to formulate a realistic or successful plan? One thing they pointed out in their final presentation is the challenges PPS is facing with declining enrollment. And this may be one of the most significant threats to the district. There are about 40,000 students eligible to attend PPS, yet only just over 18,000 are actually enrolled. The only way ERS says their plan will address this issue is the costly renovation of buildings. But what evidence do they have that old buildings are why parents choose to enroll their children elsewhere? We first need to understand why people are leaving the district, then build a plan around that. Myself is an example. Our family withdrew our son from the district because of this ERS plan. A group of dedicated parents drafted a compelling and exciting program that seeks, counterproposal that seeks to bring successful programs to more children rather than shut them down. I urge each of you to attend their meeting tomorrow to hear their proposal. It is goals-driven in a way that the ERS proposal is not, and I find it truly inspiring. If we design a district that learns from our successes and addresses the reasons people leave the district, we have an opportunity to design a district where all students can excel academically and where parents are excited to enroll their children. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will have Vanessa Dugavere.
Hi. I was at a family event that Pittsburgh Parks Conservatory was hosting not too long ago. There was a charter cyber tent set up, getting lots of foot traffic and exposure. I asked the organizer if PPS ever sets up at events like this. The answer, no, but we support public schools and we would love to have PPS represented. This is just one of the many missed opportunities for free advertising and good public relations. Parents like me would be happy to volunteer their time to promote PPS. The lack of simple outreach is shocking. It makes it hard to trust the administration to be, to be able to thoughtfully guide the district through massive closures when the grant money is wasted and simple tasks such as promoting our schools are neglected. I really hope that you will listen to the community proposal with an open mind because our kids deserve better.
Thank you. Next is Jessica Neese.
Hi. I've been a Dice, Alder Rice soccer parent for about six years. I'm also the parent manager for the past three years. I was actually born and raised in Pittsburgh, and I'm a product of the Pittsburgh Public Schools myself, and I went to Alder Rice as well. When my husband and I were choosing where to raise our children, we chose Alder Rice because of both academic and the athletic opportunities that are available to our kids. All three of our children are very good athletes. And we were pleased that Dice was an associate member of the Whipple, knowing that our kids would be able to play against some of their friends who are in suburban leagues, who are in clubs as well. However, now that this decision to leave the Whipple has been placed before us, we are questioning whether we're going to keep our children in the school. Fortunately, we have that choice to make. Lots of children do not have that choice. Many students are, and actually, it's your job as our public school elected officials and taxpayer dollars who pay your salaries. Our public schools are charged with providing the same opportunities for kids living in the school, in the city, as other school districts. It is up to you to advocate for our children, for the opportunities for our kids in the city, and for our student athletes. Many of the kids can't afford club teams, like fortunately we can, and they rely on this competitive play to provide opportunities to get noticed and to consider, continue playing after school. Once again, playing a bunch of meaningless friendlies as proposed to us for the next year does not provide us with that accolades that are possible for our kids to get noticed within the Whipple, to give scholarships, to have other opportunities beyond their, their high school education. Dice Soccer has had several girls who have gone on to play in college as a result of their involvement and achievements in the Whipple. And I'm really, really disappointed that the adults in this room did not recognize the importance of standing up for our city children and how much this means to both them as individuals and to their, and to their futures. And now because of this decision, I'm sure that there are other families like us who are considering leaving the district. Furthermore, our children were also deceived. This decision was made behind closed doors without any input from the students, parents, or coaches. It was made in 2023. Our boys and girls teams had played three quarters of this year's season before they even found out the truth. Instead of advocating for this change to take place next year, you instead allowed for their current records to be completely expunged and made nullified. The boys were actually on their way to being successful in the Whipple. People continue to underestimate the intelligence and abilities of city kids in school. It is your job to stand up for our kids, and we implore you to overturn this decision and reinstate us back into the Whipple.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker tonight is Addison Klein. Addison Klein. We will move on. The next speaker, Kimberly Neely.
Hi. My name's Kimberly Neely, and I have so many things, so many things. First, I'm going to start with, athletic participation provides healthy supervised after-school activities for students in a safe, positive environment. Students who participate in athletics have been shown to have higher grade point averages, better attendance, lower dropout rates, fewer disciplinary problems, and higher graduation rates. Participation in athletics teaches teamwork, goal-setting, discipline, sportsmanship, leadership, and other valuable life skills. That is from PPS's website. PPS Athletics website. Yet, we are given an incompetent athletic director who refuses to communicate, made a huge mistake, and the only thing that she can say as a leader is, I'm sorry. No, as a leader, you take responsibility and you find solutions. You meet with the people that you have affected and find a solution. Telling me I'm sorry via TV and a podcast is not it. That is not taking responsibility for an oops that was made in 2023 and just forgot to notify anyone. There has to be some sort of accountability. My, I have a ninth grader and a fifth grader. And the incompetence that I've found out of the athletic department between middle school and high school has been awe and shocking. The PTO at SciTech had to buy uniforms for the middle school soccer team because, because the shirts that were provided to them were falling apart, peeling, and just disgraceful. Co-ed soccer for middle school won the championship. What happened? Oh, we forgot to order medals. We just forgot that was going on. Be better. Be better. We need to be better. Athletics is important. We all know it's important, so let's act like it. Not, I mean, so many people have talked and will talk about why we need a competitive environment. We're not playing Alder Rice, Pershier, Carrick, maybe. Obviously, I'm an Obama parent, so we need better. Playing four teams, maybe, for a whole season, an 18-game season, is not sustainable. Our JV team played five games. Five games. That's ridiculous. That's ridiculous. And I don't know if that's Obama's problem, or again, our illustrious athletic director, but something needs to be done. Something needs to be done, and it needs to be acknowledged. Athletics are important. Academics are important, but we need to be better. We need to do better by our children. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Mindy. Our next speaker is Mindy Payne.
Good evening. My name is Mindy Payne. I'm a PPS parent and building substitute at Concord K5. I'm here to address a pressing issue that weighs heavily on our community, the detrimental effects of the recent teacher cuts at Concord. This decision has not only disrupted the educational landscape, but has left our students feeling heartbroken and some of our classrooms nearly unmanageable. First, let's consider the impact on our students. They come to school with dreams and aspirations, excited to learn and grow. But as the number of teachers dwindles, these young minds find themselves in increasingly crowded classrooms, struggling to receive the individual attention they so desperately need. Imagine a room filled with nearly 30 students, each with unique questions, concerns, and learning styles. It is not just overwhelming for them, it's also disheartening. One of the things that makes Concord unique is our commitment to serving a diverse population, with 25% of our students being English language learners and another 25% receiving learning support. This diversity enriches our school community, but it also presents specific challenges that require tailored support and instruction. When teachers are cut, the ability to address the needs of these students diminishes significantly. English language learners require additional guidance to build their language skills and integrate into the classroom, while our learning support students need specialized attention to thrive. Concord has approximately 435 learners with new students enrolling weekly. The heart of education is connection. With fewer teachers, the bonds that form between students and educators weaken. Our teachers are not just instructors, they're mentors, counselors, and supporters. They play a critical role in shaping a child's emotional and academic development. Cutting teachers has stripped away the essential guidance that helps our children navigate not just their studies, but their lives. We've seen the heart-wrenching expressions on our students' faces when they realize their favorite teachers are no longer there, or when they sit in a classroom filled to capacity, feeling lost in the shuffle. The excitement that comes from learning is being replaced by anxiety and disillusionment. The day the students learned that their teachers were being reassigned to other schools, many left the building heartbroken and in tears. It was upsetting and sad for the students, their parents, and our staff. The ripple effects extend beyond the classroom. When class sizes balloon, the quality of education suffers. Teachers find it increasingly difficult to engage with each student, to differentiate instruction, and to provide tailored support that fosters academic success. The result is lower morale among educators, increased stress, and ultimately, a diminished learning environment for our children. As we consider these challenges, I urge you to reflect on our motto: Students First, Always in All Ways. This phrase should guide every decision we make. If we truly put students first, we must ensure that they have the support they need to succeed. We must prioritize smaller class sizes and invest in our dedicated educators who are committed to nurturing our children's potential. Please consider the implications of these cuts.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Sarah Zangle.
Good evening, everybody. Hi. My name is Sarah Zangle. I'm a PPS parent. I'm also the lead coordinator for a community-driven proposal that has been developed from the community feedback and input. We appreciate, truly appreciate, the board taking our written materials and reviewing them. We do appreciate that. However, we feel that in order to fully understand the ideas, we need to have a presentation along with it, which is why we are offering a presentation tomorrow night. I know that all of you got email invitations, but I wanted to come here and extend a personal invitation to you. I know that it's busy, busy, busy for you all. You've had a heck of a fall, but if you can make it, that'd be great. If our PPS community can make it, that would also be great. It is tomorrow night at 6:30 at Smithfield United Church of Christ Event Hall, which is downtown, 620 Smithfield Street. We're going to have dinner. We're going to have childcare. It's pretty easy to get to with public transit, so come on down if you can. We are also going to stream it live. So if you can't get there in person, we're going to stream it. We're also going to record it, and so all of you, it can fit into your schedules. So we're going to be very mindful of your time. We are presenting the proposal tomorrow night because we feel we have innovative ideas, strategies, and just ways that stand to make an equitable and sustainable change to the PPS landscape. We are focused on changes that promote growth, choice, and opportunity. Through this process, I've been absolutely amazed by the resiliency and strength of the Pittsburgh community. I urge the board to hear our voice and use us as partners going forward. The community wants those same things as you do. We truly do. We want an on-budget, equitable, amazing education for our students. We're all here for the same reasons, so use us. Let's work together to realize Dr. Walters' dream of being the best urban school district in the country. We can do it. We can do it together. This is a turning point, and I know it's exciting. We can do this. We need to make a change, and we're going to. And if we do it together, it can be amazing. I look forward to seeing anybody who's able to come tomorrow night, Smithfield Community Church Event Hall, 620 Smithfield, in person, online. If we work together, we can stop this cycle of decline and attrition and make Pittsburgh a truly awesome example of what equitable public education could be. Let's move forward together. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Jacob Tannenbaum. Our next speaker, Jing Luo.
My name is Jing Luo. Lost my notes. Six years old, my parents moved me from China, a small little town in China where I spoke no English, to Cincinnati, Ohio, where I went to Cincinnati Public Schools. Y'all may not know what Cincinnati Public Schools is like, but it's pretty rough. I had English as a second language. Little black boys used to say ching chong, ching chong to me all day long. And I did school plays about the Montgomery Bus Boycott. I had crushes on little girls named Latonya. Okay? It all worked out. I served on three years on the faculty of Harvard Medical School before I was recruited to Pittsburgh in 2019. When we came here, we enrolled Rio, our oldest, in kindergarten at Colfax. We stuck with PPS through COVID. We didn't go to Falk for a year and then come back after everything opened up. We stuck through. Last year, we bought a house in the Alder Dice feeder district. I am so happy that every day, my fifth grader, third grader, and kindergarten, I get to walk to Colfax every single day, to and from back with no adults, by themselves. Imagine my surprise when I learned about the FU plan, where last week I learned my kids will not be going to the same school. They could be sent to Greenfield, or they could be sent to Liberty. Nobody actually knows. I can't even tell them, because I don't know. If any of you guys know where they're going to go, tell me right now. In 2026, when this plan happens, Superintendent Walters' base salary will be $306,000 and $363 per year. That's his base salary under current contract. I suggest you renegotiate his contract while you close 14 damn schools. This is a perfect time for accountability, a word that does not even show up in the ERS plan. Make this administration powerful. Allow them to succeed. Grow our school district to the best it can be. But if he should fail, if there's no Spanish in my kids' K-5 school at Liberty in 2026, cut his pay. When the bus doesn't show up to take my kid to Arsenal, cut his pay. Who is accountable for this plan? You guys, God bless your hearts, you aren't paid a dollar to be here as the board reps. I treasure you. I value you. It's your job to hold this man accountable. I want him to succeed, because he is my superintendent. But there needs to be some accountability. Y'all got to make sure he's accountable. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Rachel Alexander. Our next speaker, Cara Britannic.
My name is Cara Britannic, and my son is a kindergartner at Pittsburgh Montessori. I'm back today to talk about the lack of transparency that continues to permeate this entire FU process. As I talked about at last month's hearing, I'm still unclear on the problem we are trying to solve with this facility's utilization plan. Is it money? Is it equity? Is it student achievement, declining enrollment? It's been over six months since the FU plan was brought to light, and I still don't have a clear answer. So how will we know if any plan is successful if we don't even know what goal we're trying to achieve? There's no clear hypothesis related to how this proposal will improve the school system, just a cookie-cutter approach that will bring us right back here in seven to 10 years, talking about this again like we are right now. I've had a chance to look through all 200-plus slides of ERS's final proposal, and I still have questions surrounding the data the district has provided and that they use to inform their recommendations. As I've mentioned on several occasions, the functional capacity data is flawed and outdated and still has not been updated to reflect current enrollment or how buildings are actually using each room. The condition of the buildings is based on a facilities assessment conducted in 2021. Where is that report? Why isn't it readily available to the public? And has it been updated since then to reflect any updates and renovations that buildings have undergone? Why isn't this assessment updated any time a renovation is completed, so you always have up-to-date and accurate data on each building? And on Slide 26 of the ERS presentation, the graph related to arts teachers by school--sorry, the graph of related arts teachers by school. It lists Montessori as having two related arts teachers, but that is simply not true. We have a dedicated art, music, and PE teacher. So how many other schools are being inaccurately reported, not just on this chart, but in all the data, in order to fit your narrative? As I sat through ERS's presentation last week, one of the many things that stuck out to me was the topic of moving the Montessori school. Ms. Silk, I appreciate your questions regarding this topic, as I was wondering the same things. How much bigger is Linden, and why is the Friendship Building need to be closed? And to say I was disappointed in Dr. King Smith's response is an understatement. Her repetitive response of "the building must be taken offline" made me feel like a kid whose parents were saying "because I said so." And that really sums up my experience with ERS and this whole plan. ERS has not provided any research or industry best practices to back up their recommendations. They haven't even provided anecdotal evidence from districts they've worked with in the past to support their proposal. And PPS has not been forthcoming with the data that's being used to inform these monumental decisions. We have to file right-to-know petitions just to get the bare minimum. The "because I said so" attitude is not how you build trust with your community. As parents, we all know what that response really means, that you've already made up your minds, and this is how it has to be. But I'm not willing to accept that answer regarding the building closing or any part of this plan. Vote no on this rush proposal. Do it right. Treat us like valued partners who have a--
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker this evening is Lily Amen.
Clap once if you can hear me. Clap twice if you can hear me. Great. Now that I know you all can hear me, let's see if the board will actually listen. To Dr. Walters and the Board of Directors, students have been speaking, but you haven't listened to us yet. You make decisions that will help or hurt us, but you don't make real attempts to talk to us. And when we tell you what we need, you act like we are silent. Mr. Walker, you said it's time to rip off the Band-Aid, but you're not the one being hurt. Maybe you should stop and listen to the people that will be hurt by your decisions, a little more than just pretending to listen and patting yourself on the back for it. Dr. Walters is being told that it's his time to see if the final proposal is feasible to put into action. Since I went to more public meetings on this than he did all summer, and he hasn't made any plans to talk to us yet, I've been forced to come to you to tell you again that this isn't feasible at all. Did you know that current sixth-grade students at Schiller, like me, have gone to five different schools in five years based on the final proposal? We're at whatever elementary school we were at last year. Schiller this year, King for seventh grade, Manchester for eighth grade, and then we'll have to move on to a different school for high school. That doesn't take into effect what happens to the STEAM program or what happens to our teachers and support staff. Are we guaranteed to keep STEAM, the program I chose to stay in through eighth grade, or will the program be cut? You can't expect the program to run well if you keep shuffling us and our teachers around year after year. What about our teachers? We won't have a choice in moving buildings, but will we be able to keep our teachers and trusted adults? If the program is cut or pulled on hold, what are the chances that I will be able to get into another program of my choice for seventh or eighth grade? It's hard enough to switch into a different program when you aren't enrolling at the beginning of the school's grade level. Now, there will be hundreds or thousands of kids looking to apply for only a handful of open seats for mid-program moves. Also, I'd be a whole year behind my peers in a new program. How many years of my education are you willing to steal from me? Can you tell me to my face? How many years of education will be lost by students with disabilities? Students that already don't have stability at home. Students that don't have the same privilege as me. If it'll cost us the most, we should be the ones that are at the table every step of the way. We will bleed for this, so we should decide how to rip off the Band-Aid. You need to stop rushing this process and actually listen to us.
Thank you for your testimony. And next is Valerie Webb. Amen.
There's a lot to unpack with this proposal, so I'm just going to start with a little bit of errors with the presentation and data. First, they claim that partial magnets don't have guaranteed access to specialized programs currently at PPS. There are two schools that currently offer guaranteed access to specialized programming regardless of your ZIP code. That's Woolslayer and Schiller both, which are on the chopping block. So I agree with expanding access regardless of ZIP code, but they don't get to take credit for the work that parents did over 10 years ago. We've had that program, so let's keep going. Second, they implied that specialized programs aren't as popular at these neighborhood magnets because they don't get as many magnet applications. Well, this is flawed at best and manipulative at worst. So let's just talk about the fact that neighborhood kids don't have to put in a magnet application to get a specialized program if they're guaranteed a seat to it, right? So every child that's a neighborhood child that goes to these partial magnets that offer guaranteed access should count as an application. Not to mention, they have to save seats away from applications for neighborhood kids that happen to move into the district, or heaven forbid, want to leave charter or private and come to PPS. Let's not leave room for them, shall we? Now, third and final, which is really the most important, you've had an abysmal outreach to the community throughout this entire process. Most of the information that has been spread by the efforts of parents and community partners that you've been telling people to ignore for over a year. So you received feedback from so few parents and community members that, once again, you weren't even able to surpass a statistical margin of error. So congratulating yourself on poor results is really poor form. Also, people aren't turning out because they have suffered generations of harm and damage at the hands of school boards before you. And even if that damage wasn't done at your particular hands, you are now the ones that are holding the knife that has stabbed us in the back over and over and over again. You want to talk about ripping off a Band-Aid, Mr. Walker? It's been covering an open and festering wound for decades. And then you want to cover it with a worse Band-Aid and pretend like it's helping. That is not how it works. If anything, the additional damage that's done by plans like this will likely kill all hope of a thriving public education system in Pittsburgh, just like so many other cities around the country. We should not be repeating failures. We should look for success. You'll drive more people to apathy and leave the district. It's your job to mend the damage caused before you if you want to heal the harm that's been committed up until now. If you can't do that in this timeline, then you need to slow down and start with healing that damage. Now, you're proposing to move my child five times in five years. How are you going to stop me from moving once? And parents like me from moving once?
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker this evening is Jacob Boyce.
My name is Jacob Boyce, and I'm a gifted teacher. I'm not, however, a gifted teacher, a gifted teacher, or even a gifted teacher. And if that didn't come smoothly and naturally for you, it's likely that you're not gifted either. either. But that's okay because only 2.2% of the population is recognized as gifted. So there's only a 1 in 6 trillion chance that every member of the board is gifted. Gifted is not elite. It's not better. You can be incredible without being gifted, but gifted is rare and it is different. When I think about being different, I think about being lonely and isolated. I think of the one student I have from Westinghouse, the one student I have from ATA, the one student I have from Morrow, and they don't seem isolated in my structured analysis class, surrounded by and working with their intellectual peers. When I think about what is equitable for them, I think they deserve to work with students who have similar, different ways of approaching problems, of finding solutions. They are equally deserving of having their approaches recognized, validated, and celebrated by their peers, opposed to masked for fear of highlighting their different. Taking gifted services to the home schools will likely take away the one chance that low-density students have at not feeling intellectually isolated. Working with intellectual peers is written into the SDIs of every single one of the GIEPs I service because it is what every learner needs and deserves. Low-density schools have a higher percentage of African-American students and the proposed plan will negatively impact students from Westinghouse, ATA, King &amp; Liberty in ways that it will not impact students from Colfax, Kappa, and Carmont. Put more bluntly, this is the opposite of equity. It is a policy that uses structure to disadvantage African-Americans and is by definition therefore a racist policy. Maximizing resources for equitable student outcomes means protecting the resources that we have. I recently sent an email to 112 former students. Eight returned as no longer in the district. Over 7% of my students have left the district in the two years since leaving the Gifted Center. If families who are on the fence about staying with the district decide to take away the opportunities the Gifted Center provides, makes their decision for them, then closing the Gifted Center could viably funnel millions of more dollars into charter schools and outlying school districts. Currently, families that send their students to the Gifted Center rarely, rarely select the box. I do not approve of this recommendation on the NORA and request due process hearing or mediation. The legal fees and manpower that would be required by law, based on the parental rights of gifted students, to handle a spike in hearings and mediation, which is direct resources away from gifted students and into the legal defenses of inadequate educational assignments. The real potential here is that closing the Gifted Center will cost the district more than it saves the district, and those who remain will not have the services they need or deserve. I ask the board to consider fixing the gate before burning the city in the name of equity. Remarks complete.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, Janay Gilmore.
Good evening. My name is Janay Gilmore. I was born and raised in Pittsburgh. I attended and graduated from Pittsburgh Public Schools. For that reason, I feel that I am in an equitable position to take a stance on the faculty's utilization plan to impact Pittsburgh Arsenal pre-K to 5. I come to you today to encourage you to keep Arsenal pre-K to 5 open. Currently, I work with a student who receives this, I mean, services as an English language learner and has a disability and, I'm sorry, I missed type something, has a physical disability and at Pittsburgh Arsenal for the last, I mean, three years. I have watched as he has been cared for in a positive learning environment from all staff in the building. The staff are exceptional in the care and the care for their students and for each other. For each other. Okay, and the camaraderie, camaraderie, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce the word. And the collaboration in the building has exceeded my expectations. Not only will these proposals change, impact the students that I support, as well as his siblings and all the rest of the ELS students and the families, the closing of Pittsburgh Arsenal will negatively impact the level of support needed for the English language learner students to flourish. Furthermore, it is negative, I mean, furthermore, it will negatively impact the relationships that have been built with the staff and students and the family and the community. In my opinion, positive relationships and the foundation, or, I mean, is success for the school and the, I'm sorry. In my opinion, positive relationships are the foundation for success in the school and the closure of Pittsburgh Arsenal will salvage from the relationships that have been built over the course of many years. I'm done.
Thank you for your testimony. Next is Tay Min Hong.
Hello. My name is Tay Min Hong. I'm a resident of North Squirrel Hill and a father of a 3rd grader at Colfax. I'd like to make a comment regarding the proposed education resource strategies, the ERS plan. I thank the board for allowing me to speak. We can all see that the board has a difficult task in front of them. The looming budget issues, should no changes are made, seems to have precipitated a bold do-over plan to make things right. My comment on the plan is twofold, one regarding the Gifted Center and the other regarding Colfax. They both have a common theme. I believe that one needs to build on success, not break them up. Build on success to achieve equity and excellence, as well as foster a community of people who accomplish those goals. The Gifted Center is a program that takes place at Greenway Academy in the West End. Students from all over the district take the bus once a week, away from their usual environment, to experience programming that is not available to them at their local school. Regardless of what school you come from, you participate in the same courses, the same science fairs, and the same teachers. The centralized location promotes a unified excellence and creates a sense of community, regardless of where you come from. In contrast, the proposed plan offers to move the programs into the local schools where the students stay at their usual locations. Not much detail is offered in the plan, but different schools have different resources available to them. Due to the inherent differences between any two schools, I cannot see how the proposed plan makes it more equitable for the gifted students at the different schools, especially those from the schools that may not have as much access to infrastructure. I urge the board to build on the Gifted Center, not dissolve it. Now, I would like to address Colfax, where my son is in 3rd grade. Colfax is one of the more successful schools in the district and the one I'm familiar with. I understand that there is a budget shortfall and the motivation to split it up, but the plan proposes to send its students to four different schools. Not much detail is offered in the plan, except that the feeder zones may change. The percentage of students in their walking zones also change from half to a third for Alder Dice Feeders, a relative 70% reduction of walkers. It takes time and leadership to create a community that achieves excellence. I urge the board to build on the Colfax community, not dissolve it. I thank the board for their Herculean effort in helping us all succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Michelle Shrednicky.
Hello. My name is Michelle Shrednicky. I've been an ESL teacher at Arsenal pre-K to 5 for 10 years. I wanted to start by giving some data. Arsenal Elementary has been an ESL center for 19 years. Restarting a new ESL center is no easy feat. We have had the same principal for 16 years. Our administration and staff have the knowledge and experience for meeting the diverse needs of our English language learners. This cannot easily be replaced. Did you know that Arsenal pre-K to 5 serves almost 150 English language learners with five ESL teachers? Can they all fit in Sunnyside while the new ESL center is being built? And what happens when the new building becomes available? Will they need to move again? Although it will be helpful to have a Northview Heights School for students, it will take several years to become available. In the meantime, the movement and change will create a hardship for ELL families. Why do we need to put everyone in a box for sake of conforming to grade-level configurations? If we are talking about equity, there will need to be some exceptions depending on certain circumstances. It seems as if the consultants really want Arsenal to be middle school only. Does it have to be? To not uproot or disrupt the lives of our most fragile families, could we just leave it as it is? Our middle and elementary operate separately anyway. They have separate principles and work as two different entities in one space. English language learners and their parents come to easily know and get used to the elementary and then seamlessly transition to middle school without having to relearn and make any major adaptations. We need to make the exception and keep Arsenal Elementary in middle school as it is to prevent further disturbance to our ELLs, the ones who are continuing to bolster our enrollment versus minimizing it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good evening, and I'd like to incorporate by reference all my prior testimony and a friendly reminder that Pittsburgh is a sports town, so please fix the whippy old stuff. Just in case. I want to reiterate my opposition to the FU plan because, among other things, moving Montessori somewhere that only holds 30 more students doesn't make sense when the current site can be expanded. Additionally, Greenway and the Gifted Center saves lives, and gifted education is special education. I assure you, as one of those isolated students in my elementary years at a Catholic school, gifted took me, gifted saved me. I was bullied every single day, and there isn't one day that I don't go by thankful for the expansion of knowledge and opening of my mind that I got at the Gifted Center. So there's no way you can do it cheaper on-site. You tried that and it didn't work. That's why we have the Gifted Center. Just going to ring that institutional knowledge bell there. But even if you could, you'd have to serve students being educated in the diaspora against citywide sites in some PPS and some non-PPS schools. And it reduces the interscholastic collegiality that exists now with the Gifted Center. Also, teachers cannot be expected to differentiate lessons fourfold or have traveling teachers. It's not a circus. And have one, even if you have a staff teacher in a school, they aren't gifted in all areas. They might bring their one gift to the table. That's kind of, again, the beauty of having the center all together. Students can choose what gifts call them. Additionally, students might be segregated as they are in the high school setting. We see that now with the fight over, well, I want my kid in PSP. I want my kid in CIS. Don't tell me you guys don't hear that. I know you hear that. So that would be the opposite of the inclusionary classroom that you're trying to go for. Alternatively, because you know I don't like to bring problems unless I'm bringing solutions, you can have inclusive, universal testing throughout the district. You can have equivalency admissions because, correct me if I'm wrong, Council, there's nothing that stops anyone in the school code from someone being identified as talented in addition to giftedness. So you can expand that program along those lines. And again, I'd be happy to help writing down all the things that you need to write down for these kinds of plans. And you can admit gifted adjacent programming. So I'm really asking you, please, just vote no on this FU plan because that's all it does, is F us all. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Today I have to speak from the heart because we forgot our speech, forgot my speech because we were in such a rush to make the speech. But I'm here to tell you that you shouldn't put gifted anywhere else other than the Gifted Center. Because despite the kids that do normally go to Greenway but have to go to the Pittsburgh Classical Center, it's still a gifted center. Even if you do move it, it's going to be a gifted center. And I'm really just hiking off the trail right now, but... I like, I don't want you to move gifted into our schools because I like riding the bus. And I like being social from other schools, and I get to meet kids from other schools, get to be taught by other teachers. I get to have a lot of fun. And I wish I could have brought a few examples, but I couldn't. And I did, I don't want you to move gifted because this is my, well, I started gifted last year, the middle of the year. So this is my, I'm heading into my second year, so it's about, about, I want to say, 11/12ths of a year for me going to gifted. And it just, I don't really have a big point, but my point is gifted, gifted is fun. Gifted is fine the way it is. But this is my last thing because I'm running short on time. I don't want you to sift gifted. That's going to be my signature line for this. Don't sift gifted. Gifted's fine the way it is. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Jude Porterfield.
Thank you, Jude. Next, our next speaker is April Closour.
Good evening. This is kind of a salad of different comments. I wanted to first say thank you to Ms. Reed and Ms. Silk, I think who were the two board members that came to an area of their districts or, I guess, basically the Arsenal, the Alder Dice feeder pattern. You gave a lot of grace in your listening to people's questions and in your responses. And I really hope that board members will do that. I don't, I'm not even aware, I'm not aware enough to know, but I hope that other board members are doing the same things, going and talking where people are in their communities. Really, really glad that there are some, I guess, parents or students from Arsenal here today in the English language learner community. I hope that board members can get out to places like the apartment complex on Woodlow Street in the West End, get out to Northview in person to hear from people. And for the meeting that was held yesterday afternoon at the school in Greenfield, some of the conversation revolved around equity and an equity that might be created by any changes that we make to the district schools. I wanted to recommend, I think I looked at every slide that was posted on the board's website, and just quickly in my last minute here. website, and just quickly in my last minute here, we were given data, and I'm sure this data is available elsewhere if you look, but we were given upfront on the website information about the school, I think, as it exists now in terms of economic disadvantaged versus advantaged students. And I think in terms of this dashboard that we have that lists like who's being affected disproportionately, that we could also see the resulting configurations of the schools, what would be the change in economically advantaged versus disadvantaged students, and also any change in the racial balance of those schools as they were versus how they would be.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Ginger Tompkins.
Good evening. Is the proposal equitable for all children? Hello, I am Ginger Tompkins, a 26-year PPS veteran teacher and PPS graduate. For the last 15 years, I've served as an English language development teacher at Arsenal and have experienced significant benefits of working with children from all over the world and working with a very diverse group of teachers and paraprofessionals. Arsenal Pre-K 5 and Arsenal 6-8 have coexisted separately and successfully in the historic landmark Arsenal Building for almost two decades. There is enough space for both the elementary and middle school, along with welcoming Wool Slayer Steam Neighborhood Magnet. Also, the district has a goal to recruit and retain Black teachers, and Arsenal meets or exceeds the mark. Arsenal's Pre-K staff is 48% African-American, 50% of the homeroom teachers are Black. This is very rare and possibly nonexistent in other PPS schools and didn't just happen. It took the leadership of our current principal, Dr. Ruthie Ray, for this to occur. Schools closed 12 years ago, and we experienced a transition when Fort Pitt closed, and we warmly welcomed the students from Garfield and Bloomfield without problems and continue to thrive as a diverse school community. Now I would like to suggest the following ideas for the board and Dr. Walters feasibility team to consider. Is the planned resegregation? I ask this because the Somali Bantu and Burundian families that live in Northview will live and attend a school in a very segregated space. Northview closed for that very reason 12 years ago. As we all know, that community has a history of generational poverty, crime, and violence. The children in the Northview area will never leave that hill and experience the joy they experience every day when they walk into Arsenal Pre-K 5. This is most concerning to have groups of refugees, immigrants, and some of the most marginalized Black people never experience other groups of people and expose them to something different. Unity in a home-like community of support for diverse students and families must be preserved. That is Arsenal Pre-K 5. The culture of the staff to sift students is essential. Research shows representation matters. Various cultures and racial groups in one space matters. It will be devastating to break up multiple immigrant and refugee young children who come together every day and learn together. Arsenal Pre-K 5 is home to children who speak 18 languages from 20 different countries. This year, we've already welcomed 60 newcomers, and this is their first time in a U.S. school. We are preparing to welcome three more this week alone. All schools are not prepared to engage in what it takes to bring multiple groups of children into a school with an effective and comprehensive transitions and support. Keep the facility as-is with Arsenal Middle and Arsenal Pre-5 in the same building. The faculty has already allocated two separate entrances, staff, principals, and allotted rooms that work. The model shared in the proposal presentation for the new middle school consists of 225 students for a building that can hold well over 1,000 students. That does not make sense. Arsenal Pre-K 5 currently has 325 children, and the enrollment continues to grow weekly. The presentation was not accurate in terms of low enrollment. I ask you to please leave Arsenal Pre-K 5 as-is and allow us to welcome Wool Slayer students and continue to serve a truly diverse student population while remaining an ELD regional site and neighborhood.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Danielle Keys.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Keys, and I'm a 25-year PPS teacher as well as a PPS graduate. For the last 12 years, I've served in various roles at Pittsburgh Arsenal Pre-K 5. Currently, I have the opportunity to co-teach with one of our ELD teachers. Serving students from my community as well as students from around the world gives me great joy. Seeing my students in my community is often the highlight of my week and weekends. I am able to attend their games along with other staff members. Arsenal Pre-K 5 is home to me and my students. I transitioned to Arsenal Pre-K 5 12 years ago when Fort Pitt ALA closed. I could not believe the diversity present there. What an opportunity for students of Garfield to learn and grow with students from all over the world. The highlight of the year for me and my students and their families is Arsenal 360 Night, commonly referred to as International Night at many schools. To see the students and their families dressed in their native dress and sharing food from their many cultures is amazing. I envisioned retiring from Fort Pitt. However, Arsenal welcomed me and the students from Garfield and Bloomfield without problems and continues to thrive as a diverse school community. Do you really want to leave this community as a school desert for Pre-K 5 students? 12 years ago, when Fort Pitt ALA closed, it was a tremendous loss to the community at large. The families knew the teachers, and the teachers knew the families. Although we see less neighborhood schools throughout the city, the schools located in the east have been hit hard. At some point, we must look at what's happening across our district. It is not okay to continue to shift Black and Brown students around as if transitions will not cause trauma for our children. I do believe that it is vital for students to see themselves and feel connected to the people responsible for their education. At Fort Pitt ALA, I was able to build those strong relationships with my students, and when I was offered the chance to join Arsenal staff in the fall of 2012, I was excited. Thinking back on the students and their transition, I remember our students feeling uneasy about joining a new school culture with so many new and unfamiliar faces. Our students transitioned smoothly because of the open arms that were extended by Dr. Ray and the Arsenal Pre-K 5 staff. With this being the start of my 25th year of teaching, Pittsburgh Arsenal Pre-K 5 is by far the most diverse school I've been a part of, and it would be a shame to close a school that is continuously growing. In closing, I ask that you reconsider keeping Pittsburgh Arsenal Pre-K 5 open. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Patty Barilla.
Hi, my name is Patty Barilla, teacher at Concord but advocate for all students. Today, I stand before you to address a pressing concern that impacts not just the academic achievement of our students, but their emotional and psychological well-being. As educators and caregivers, we know that a school is not merely a place for academic learning. It is a sanctuary where relationships are forged, trust is built, and a sense of safety is nurtured. Yet, recent decisions to level classes after six weeks of school threaten to unravel the very fabric of trust and relationships that we have painstakingly woven into our classrooms. By increasing class sizes to 30 students per classroom, moreover, when 60% of a grade level is either an English language learner or a student in need of learning supports, those in charge have not only affected our youngest students' academic success, but more critically, their emotional stability. The beginning of the school year is filled with eager learners who have built connections with their teachers and peers. Now, due to administrative decisions, these relationships were abruptly severed. The emotional distress we witnessed when students learned of these changes was heartbreaking. We saw tears, fear, confusion, emotions that no child should have to navigate in their safe haven. The process of leveling has been abolished by many districts across the country, notably Philadelphia Public Schools, because they realized the damage they were doing to some of our most vulnerable students. Moreover, the disruptions extend beyond the classroom walls. When students are moved to new classrooms, they face the daunting task of finding their place among established friend groups, adapting to new routines, and navigating a landscape that suddenly feels unfamiliar. For our elementary students, this can be overwhelming, causing significant emotional distress. At Concord Elementary, we've made significant strides in supporting our diverse student body, including the newcomers, English language learners, and those facing academic challenges. Our success has stemmed from our commitment to nurturing relationships and fostering trust among students and staff. We've developed systems that promote inclusion and understanding, all without necessary mental health supports, because those too have been stripped away by the district. Now, the district's decision to level classes and remove vital staff disrupts our progress. It contradicts our collective mission to ensure that students come first always and in all ways. By increasing class sizes without taking into consideration the children behind the classroom doors, we have not only jeopardized their academic success, but also their mental and emotional well-being. Together, I hope we can, as a community, end the leveling process that unnecessarily harms our children. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Kim Dahlhausen.
Good evening, PPS Board of Directors and Administrators. My name is Kim Dahlhausen, and I am in my 13th year at Brasheer as an English language development teacher. I am here to advocate once again for the district's English learners and the faculty and staff who serve them. Given the district's love of data, let me share some now with you and the public. This school year to date, Brasheer has received 52 new enrollments, of which 66% are newcomers, scoring a 2.0 or lower on the WIDA screener. This does not include the as-yet-to-be-screened 11 enrollments who have been added to our rolls in the last week and a half. Alder Dice has had 46 new enrollments this year, of which the majority are newcomers. South Hills Middle has had 63 new enrollments this year, of which 52 are newcomers. That is 161 new enrollments among just three secondary schools in the district. Too much of the time is spent reacting to these growing numbers instead of planning strategically and imaginatively on how to meet the unique needs of these diverse students, newcomer English learner adolescents. Some of these students have robust, rigorous academic backgrounds. Others have not been in school since they were eight years old, but suddenly find themselves at 16 in ninth grade. Some students have strong literacy skills in their home language, and others are learning to read and write for the first time in their non-native language. Some have traveled across countries on foot through remote landscapes. Some have been airlifted out of Afghanistan as the Taliban retook the government. Some have grown up in refugee camps. Some have been the recipients of green card lotteries. Every story is unique. They bring incredible assets to our PPS communities, but we're not prepared. Like many things in Pittsburgh, the status quo seems to be the plan. In the meantime, the teachers and paraprofessionals on the front lines continue to provide the best education they can. However, a single Spanish-speaking paraprofessional at Brasheer had more parent-teacher conferences scheduled than many teachers, one every 10 minutes over the full six hours. In a school where 15% of students come from Spanish-speaking families, how is this equitable access? Just today, our Swahili-speaking paraprofessional was called over the intercom not once, but three times over the course of the school day, each time pulled out of a classroom where she supports students' learning. Data is important, but only if it serves to help the district truly reimagine a more equitable, rigorous, flexible, culturally relevant education for our newly arrived English learners. A newcomer academy for adolescents could be the opportunity to try a truly bold change in the education model. We invite you to create one. We are eager to plan with you. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you for your testimony. And next will be Melinda Mix.
Hello again, I'm Melinda Mix. I am an ESL itinerant teacher. I have been at 14 schools in the last seven years at PPS. And you've already heard from some other ESL teachers tonight about why they oppose closing Arsenal K to 5. Arsenal is an example of a school in PPS that is actually able to serve our English learners and do it right. When my students move to Arsenal, I don't worry about them. I know that they can get what they need there. Good job, guys. You also just heard from my colleague, Kim Dahlhausen, about how our secondary ESL centers are being inundated with new students, and most of them are newcomers, and we are left to deal with the effects. And although the new ERS proposal at least somewhat considers the needs of our ESL students, it does not solve the two fundamental problems we are facing, especially at the secondary level. First, even though our ESL center schools...sorry. First, even our ESL center schools are not equipped to handle the number of students or the intense needs of these students. In just two months, Alder Dice has added nearly enough newcomer students to fill the schedule of an additional full-time ESL teacher. So has Brasheer. So has South Hills Middle. Newcomer students, especially students with interrupted formal education, need an immense amount of support to be successful. They take a double period of sheltered English language with an ESL teacher. Many students need additional interventions to learn to read and write. They need appropriate instruction in all of their classes, whether that class is taught by an ESL teacher or not, and they need continued support as they acquire English and progress into more mainstream instruction, often for at least four to six years or more. Second, many of our students are not attending the ESL center schools at all. Some families are making that choice, and we don't really know why. Many families now are victims of the impersonal and difficult and terrible new online registration system. We don't know that they exist until they show up one day in our schools. They just appear. A newcomer academy with all the necessary services and instruction consolidated could change that for us. Families would be referred there to get help with registration and see the program and its benefits firsthand. We could have ongoing relationships with the resettlement agencies and the community organizations that help these families get settled. Students would work with an entire staff that is designed to ensure their academic progress. Right now, those teachers and supports are scattered throughout the district, and even the ESL center programs don't have what they truly need. We are spread too thin across too many buildings. There are too many itinerants in too many buildings. We are trying, but we can't possibly provide equity to our students. As I said last time, you will see the effects of this very quickly. Work with us to find solutions here and not just let it go and see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And next, we will have June Weiden.
I want to start off with acknowledging and stating that the problem we face is not that the school district has too many schools. The problem is that the school district hasn't provided enough resources for student success. The plan proposed by Educational Resource Strategies will not solve this problem, but it will damage the education of our students. First and foremost, closing over a quarter of our schools will harm our students. The consultants' plan to close 15 schools and crowd 3,000 students into the remaining schools will harm our students' education and well-being. Overcrowding leads to higher rates of stress and raises the student-to-teacher ratio. Each teacher will have to split their limited time between more and more students. Closing schools will force students to attend schools miles away with no plan for transportation laid out. Under the plan, children will walk two miles to school and back through hilly streets every day in extreme heat and cold in Pittsburgh rain and snow weather conditions. The plan notes that many of the buildings in the PPS system do not have air conditioning to adequately protect students and staff from the heat, but the solution to this problem is not closing schools that don't have air conditioning and crowding students into the buildings that remain, some of which also do not have air conditioning. Additionally, there is no guarantee that this plan will work, which means it is gambling with our children's futures. The consultants admit that they don't know yet if this will save the district money. The last time the district closed schools in 2006, it cost the district millions of dollars. Construction projects often exceed projected timeframes and cost more than predicted. Why won't they this time? We spent a quarter of a million dollars to hire consultants from states away to tell us what to do, rather than listen to and trust the teachers, professionals, students, and parents who have decades of experience in the city and know what challenges we face and what we need to overcome them. The consultants based their plan off of polling, but they have not released the unaggregated data and methodology of these polls. These critical details must be released so the public can fully engage in this discussion. We also need to say that this plan places an unfair burden on communities already hard-hit from racist displacement policies. In particular, the many neighborhoods in the north side of Pittsburgh will lose over half of their schools. The ERS plan will perpetuate racial and economic injustice and runs counter to PPS's stated goal of building racial equity. Any plan that abandons some of our communities fails all of our communities. Our students are our future, our future nurses and engineers, scholars and doctors, the workers who make the world run, so all of us have a real interest in making sure they have a solid education. We urge the Board of Directors to reject ERS's proposal and listen to the decades of experience telling you it's a bad idea, not pay consultants who have left the city after six months. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will have Holly Munson.
Hi, I'm Holly. I am the proud parent of Lars, who we've seen here. He's homesick today, but he's... You can find that at Pittsburgh-Parents.com. I read through, like many other invested parents, every detail of the final FU Plan and press release, and I manually reviewed and pasted the data into a spreadsheet so that anyone can look up their school and understand the changes for their school. So I can certifiably say, this plan doesn't add up. For example, the consultants have based the FU Plan on the unsubstantiated claim that the ideal size for K-5 schools is -- sorry, I missed that number -- is 250 to 350, and then the ideal for grades six and up is 350 to 500 students. In Slide 94 of the final FU Plan, they also proposed a policy that would automatically review a school for closure if it falls below a certain enrollment threshold. But in the final FU Plan, according to their very own projections, four schools would automatically fail that threshold. So the new Arsenal 6-8, Classical 6-8, Mifflin K-5, and Mondasori at Linden would be at risk of closure the second they reopen their doors. Now, that could be a result of sloppy work, or it could be a feature, not a bug, in other words, setting up these schools to fail. And there's also a lot of concerns of the resulting consolidations, getting enormous schools. So for K-5, all of these schools would be 500-plus: Allegheny, Concord, Faison, Langley, Minideo, and Whale, over 500 students in a K-5 school. As for 6-8, there would be Arlington, Carmel, Colfax, and Manchester would be over 500 students in a 6-8 school. I don't think that is what is going to give us equity, efficiency, and excellence for our children. As I've said before, this plan does not add up. My son Lars will be fine. We're white, English is our first language, we have citizenship, his parents have college degrees and stable incomes. But I'm here because I want my son Lars to know that it's not enough for us to be fine. The FU Plan will hurt our neighbors, the people who are his friends and who he needs to learn from, and these are the children, many of whom are Black and Brown, English language learners, and who have disabilities. And Board members, I realize there are nuances to board politics and that there may be a cultural deference, particularly towards the superintendent you appointed, but with all due respect, if that leads you to vote yes on the FU Plan, you will be voting yes on a plan that hurts people. I believe that we should be brave and kind and true, and it's more important to be brave and kind and true than it is to be polite, and I trust and hope that each of you believe that, too. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your testimony. Next speaker is Jessica Marlin.
My name is Jessie Marlin. I am a Pittsburgh native, a proud graduate of Eisenstein and Alder Dice, and a parent of two first graders at Will Slayer. As I continue to sit through so many community and school board meetings, I keep thinking, I can't believe where we are at, talking about a revised proposal that's largely been unresponsive to community input and is fundamentally unchanged from the first. How did we get here? I'm wondering if some of you may be asking yourselves the same question. The Pittsburgh community has really come together with a unified voice to loudly make a very thoughtful, cogent argument for why the ERS proposal is bad news for PPS. You've heard about lack of definition of the problem we're trying to solve, inaccurate data, no metrics, contradictory arguments, school deserts in the East End and other places, lack of equity, no idea about financial impact, lack of transparency, no transportation plan, arguments about injustices related to specific school closures, and on and on and on. You've heard this in a fairly unified voice, yet we're basically in the same spot as we were before. Frustrated is probably a polite description of how I know that I feel, and I think many of my friends and neighbors are feeling. So just like us, sitting in the gallery, you have heard all the same things that we have. You've heard our voices, but we haven't heard your voices. So we don't know what you are thinking and how you are feeling about this. So I'm an optimist, and I'm imagining that you're just like us. You are thinking and feeling the same things we are. How did we get here? This is inequitable. We spent $250,000, but that doesn't mean that we have to do what they say when the quality of what they put forth is poor and they clearly don't know anything about Pittsburgh. I don't want the support for this plan to be a part of my legacy on the school board. I want to be on the right side of history. This must be what many of you are thinking. So what do we need right now? We need a hero. We have a lot of heroes in this story, like the folks from 412 Justice, people who moved heaven and earth just to be able to speak at these meetings, students who have gotten up here, what a scary thing for them to do, but they've done it. What we haven't seen is an act of heroism from a board member. You know what I'm talking about. I'm talking about being a disruptor, causing good trouble. When they go low, we go high, seize the moment, history-making heroism. That is what we need in this moment. So I want to leave you all with a message of hope and appeal to your humanity. You don't have to go along to get along. You can be the hero. Let heroism be the legacy of your term and of this era of the PPS Board. There is still time.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Julia Miller.
Good evening. My name is Julia Miller, the mother of two brilliant boys, Roman and Chance, who couldn't be here tonight. For them and their future, I stand before you to tell you why I am against this consolidation closure proposal. I am a product of the Pittsburgh Public School System, attending Carmel, West Liberty, and graduating from Beshear. As our neighborhood school, my sons attend Pittsburgh Mifflin pre-K-8, where they do amazing things to showcase what a great school we have. However, my concern is not for their educational opportunities, but their ability to participate in their own education. Currently, there are two buses along with a few vans that bring students to school. This past Friday at 7:30 a.m., we were notified that the Transportation Department said one of the buses would not be operating that morning. And keep in mind, school starts at 8:20. And this is not the first time that this has happened. Parents are left scrambling to figure out how their children will get to school, and I'm sure some do not attend because they count on the bus to get there. This has also affected our children's participation in athletics, as we have had more than one sporting event canceled due to lack of transportation. I have to admit, we are one of the fortunate families within walking distance to the school, which is one of the many reasons we like it. For others, they rely on buses for transportation, and with the new proposal, we will, too. As it stands, the plan is to ship our children all over the city to other schools that would require more buses for transport. My question is, how do you plan on ensuring and securing transportation when it is not even consistent now? Transportation is a necessity. With my children, I have experienced the issues with transportation for the Pittsburgh Gifted Center, a program planned for closure in this proposed agenda. When my oldest started going there three years ago, Z-trip was their transport. One of the issues with that was the Z-trip drivers were making other stops with our children in the van, causing them to be late for dismissal, and not to mention just how inappropriate it is to be stopping at other locations with our kids unsupervised. This past year, we were finally able to get an actual bus to transport. Now you want to close the gifted center. My son and others are granted the opportunity to be in an environment where they are free to be themselves and where they can learn in a comfortable, nonjudgmental setting. Being there gives them the ability to be challenged and to grow. How do you intend to integrate gifted education services into the individual schools? Because it is something I don't believe you can reproduce outside of its current form. The care that our teachers at Pittsburgh Mifflin have for the students is top-notch, and they, along with other staff, have implemented several new programs in the past few years that have changed the dynamic for the better. With all that, the teachers have a hard enough time getting through their prepared lessons. Our children will not get the full benefit of the gifted education services unless they stay in the PGC building with the devoted teachers and staff who are there to educate them. Taking this away from them is detrimental to their education. I am asking you, please do not rush to vote yes to this plan. We need more consideration to these children to fully understand the negative impacts this will have on their educational needs. Thank you for your time, and Jess.
Thank you for your testimony. Next speaker, Kelly Jones.
My children go to Pittsburgh Public Schools. They attend Miller, which is one of the schools being closed, one of the 15 schools being closed. I'm at least grateful that we have another neighborhood elementary school that they can go to. My heart goes out to the neighborhoods that like Arsenal and WOW, Bloomfield, and Lawrenceville, and other ones whose elementary-age students will have to be bused elsewhere. I'm going to share with y'all what "public" means. There's two adjectives, meanings, of or concerning the people as a whole, two, done, perceived, or existing in open view. The noun, ordinary people in general, the community. Unfortunately, our Pittsburgh Public School System is not operating as such. It's not operating in transparent manner. Things are sprung on us, and as parents, we're made to have to figure out our pivot, our next move. A lot of parents have altogether given up and just moved their students to another situation. I can't do that. I don't do that. I won't do that. I don't believe that Pittsburgh Public Schools will fail us continually. I'm asking that y'all invite us in in a real way that means something for our children. These are our children. I know people who work for Pittsburgh Public Schools whose children also go to Pittsburgh Public Schools. I know y'all care. I'm just asking y'all to be creative and really think about ways in which -- or just like, there's so many experts and geniuses among your parents. The children have their own view of how things could be better because they go there every day. Who's learning? I just request that y'all really start to talk to us. The website is so mind-blowing because there's all these passages about how, you know, we all work together, and it's just not true. The parents do not have a buy-in. We come in and we talk, and we're ignored. It's sad. And I really, I'm just asking that y'all think about a way that this can happen, because I know it can happen. I know it can. Y'all are brilliant people, and so are the parents, and so are our children, and we would like them to continue to be such and be fostered. And for the stuff on the website to be a real thing, it sounds beautiful. But as it stands, closing 15 schools is not going to do it. I don't know exactly what y'all are up against, but y'all's not telling us either. And it's all of our problem. We're all adults. We all are going to be responsible.
Thank you for your testimony. Next is Griffin Leon.
There we go. I am not Griffin Leon. I'm his mom. He's at a game right now, and he wants me to read this statement to you. So this is regarding the WHIPIL decision, and it's called "Statement from a Team Member." Dear Dr. Walters and Board Members, I'm writing this statement to bring attention to the injustice and lack of transparency which the new WHIPIL rule has recently inflicted onto us Obama players, and to highlight its ramifications so that the PPS soccer community, coaches, Board members can all move past this negative change and work towards constructing a new rule in which all PPS soccer teams become members of WHIPIL again. There are many consequences as a result of this new regulation. One of these consequences includes less opportunity for talented players. While some of the soccer players outside of our high -- while some of our soccer players play outside of our high school for club teams such as Steel City and Riverhounds, most of my teammates can't afford such a high price of these clubs, and therefore only have the opportunity to get better playing at the high school level. By making us play against just two city teams, the competition that makes a player improve will plummet significantly. Another reason this regulation limits players' opportunities is because of our inability to play in the WHIPIL playoffs. If you do not know, many scouts from colleges will come to WHIPIL playoffs as a chance to look at new talent. If our city schools cannot play, it means that none of our city talent can be scouted and recognized. For approximately 12 years, PPS school soccer teams have been an associate member of WHIPIL, and just two weeks ago, we were told that we were cut from playing, and our team record for over half of the season had been wiped away with no reason or explanation given. Since that time, I've tried to -- since that time, we have tried to email the athletic director to get information. Can we at least finish our season? It's over almost halfway complete, and if it's a district or geographical thing, why do teams in our own district, District 8, like Winchester-Thurston and Shady Side Academy, still play in WHIPIL, and we do not? We have many questions, but at the end, but in the end, my teammates and I just want what's fair. I do know that Dr. Walters and our PPS school believes in equity, achievement, and a positive learning environment, so I hope this is something you can review and help.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker, I want to apologize first if I mispronounced this name, because we understand how important names are. So it is Asfue Angureta.
Good evening. My name is Asifue Anmarit. I'm from Congo, and I've been here for five years. I have five children at Arsenal School, and two passed by Arsenal, they are now at high school. I can say Ms. Ronek is my ESL teacher, because she teaches at school and I'm taught at home. I'm so proud of you. I came, I was working, but I say I don't want to work, I just want to stand for Arsenal, because I know what Arsenal is. When we came from Africa, I brings my kids at Arsenal, and they felt stable, because we was been in the move, was been in the refugee camp by like 15 years. Now, when we came, we was stable, they are now learning, they know now English, they have teachers as friends, they have other children from different countries as friends. Now, they knew they are moving, and that picture which comes. For America, when you understand you are moving, you see it's normal. But for us, that picture come again, how was running, series to series, no peace, moving camp to camp. That picture come again in our mind, and to say, we thought when we come in America, we will be stable. Again, we're moving. My children told me, we are going to have new teachers, new friends, new -- we don't think we will make it. They should not close Arsenal. Please do not close Arsenal. I believe that it's possible to make up Arsenal and be more beautiful than it is now. We can, the government can put like ACs and other things to make us, to make up Arsenal again, to make it up again, because when I see on Google, it say it's like 30%. There is a way to move it to 80%. Why not 100%? We love Arsenal, we love the fruit from Arsenal, we love how teachers teach our children. We love that, and we wish that school, please do not close Arsenal School. I'm sorry, my English is not good enough. Those who passed by here was very elocuent, but for me, I'm learning, but I think my message will be understood. Please do not close Arsenal. We love it, and I'm so proud of the fruit from Arsenal.
Thank you for your testimony. The minute is done? Thank you. And next, once again, I apologize for a mispronunciation.
Because when I see on Google, it say it's like 30%. There is a way to move it to 80%. Why not 100%? We love Arsenal. We love the fruit from Arsenal. We love how teachers teach our children. We love that, and we wish that school, please do not close Arsenal School. I'm sorry, my English is not good enough. Those who passed by here was very eloquent, but for me, I'm learning, but I think my message will be understood. Please do not close Arsenal. We love it, and I'm so proud of the fruit from Arsenal.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. And next, once again, I apologize for a mispronunciation if I mispronounced this name. Lu Sambo Maderoa.
There, Ophel. Can you hear the voice? And if we ask him, you are moving, they will say, no, we are not moving. I am Mr. Maderoa. I represent the community in Northview Heights, composed with Somali Bantu, Burundians family, Congolese, and much more African countries that speak French. This family cannot reach out to talk to the board, to the language barrier, neither the board fail to provide some documents so they know what's going on. They sent me. Arsenal is home for all these students and family. Life of poverty, stress, violence, segregation, this family have. But when they walk at Arsenal doors, they feel like home. The ESL teachers that work at Arsenal give them those care, and they feel like they have parents, second parents, in Arsenal. Why close Arsenal? We have moved from our home to refugee camps, now settled in Pittsburgh, and now we are moving again to schools. We are tired of moving. And last, Arsenal pre-K to 5 has teachers who are accustomed to the diverse cultures. And to cope with this whole culture, it's take more years. Now, we are saying that we're going to take the student from Arsenal to other school. Where are we taking them? They teach there. It's going to take them more years, a lot of years, so they can cope with the students. So do you think it's a good idea to move them? They've been moving a lot. So as I can say, we, the Northview Heights community, are against closing Arsenal pre-K to 5. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Gada Makoshi. Our next speaker is Emily Sawyer.
You don't have to do this. You don't have to close schools. To be clear, you can decide to do so, but nothing makes school closures a foregone conclusion. I know the outlook may seem insurmountable, but let's talk about why school closures are not the solution that we are looking for. The metric underlying school closure processes is often the concept of utilization. This is an extremely problematic metric because school capacity calculations often don't take into consideration the actual needs of the school and its students, and because it ignores the underlying sabotage and systemic abandonment through decades of underfunding and divestment that create the conditions of facilities, the lack of curricular and extracurricular opportunities, and the shortage of staff that lead to underenrollment. These schools most often serve high populations of Black and Latinx students, English-language learners, students with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged students. And let's be honest, the most underutilized school is a closed school. On top of this very shaky foundation, school closures have been shown not to save money without major layoffs. We have yet to hear how PPS will do what no other major U.S. school district has managed to do, that is, save significant dollars without firing teachers. But wait, there's more. Closing schools doesn't just not save money without mass firings, it is demonstrably harmful and directly negatively impacts student outcomes. Research out of Stanford on urban school closures from 2012 to 2014 overwhelmingly found that academic outcomes suffered, particularly for already low-performing students. A study from Brown University out in May of this year linked the experience of a school closure to decreases in post-secondary education attainment, employment, and earnings at ages 25 through 27. That same study also found that school closures negatively impact both test scores and behavior. Closures also force families to travel further to get to schools that are not in their communities, making it harder to form relationships with staff, join extracurriculars, or get involved in parent organizations. There are better ways to solve our problems. These include fighting for increased state and federal shares of education funding, community-driven budget processes, community-led assessments of building use, enacting equity safeguards for school closures via school district policy or state law, and conducting a thorough and real audit of the district function, not just its books. I included resources on all of these in my written comments. If we continue to assume and act as if school closings are inevitable, we will be playing into the hands of education privatizers. We know closing schools doesn't work because it has never worked. We don't have to look any further than pass closures in our own district to see that. Please don't vote for school closures just because you think you don't have a choice. That is a narrative you are being sold by people who benefit from you thinking it's inevitable. It doesn't have to be this way. I want to mention that it is the Dignity in Schools Campaign's National Week Against School Pushout. Dignity in Schools works to challenge pushout and end the school-to-prison pipeline. They envision schools and districts that work toward preventing trauma, repairing harm, promoting healing, and rejecting.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Jaslyn Worthy.
Okay. So if you don't have time to do it right, when will you have time to do it over? And this is from John Wooden. So even though what ERS presented to you is what they think is the solution to our problems, it's not. Each of the recommendations that seem to save us money and magically fix the budget, they will improve student outcomes and provide each school with an abundance of resources, right? These games are, not these games, these gains are purely illusory. The outcomes they assumed, you know, will be better for our district after implementing this plan has never been proven to be a direct result of closing schools in this city. Making the decision to agree to such a plan right now after not giving it the proper amount of time and dedication to ensure it's what's best for our children is merely embedding problems that will come back and bite us later. They hit everyone with the, oh, this is what the community wants, and if that is the case, why do we have to come up and create our own? That tells you that we are not in agreeance. That tells you that we will not sit and allow you to not only contemplate one option in regards to the future of our children. Is that why we still don't have the option to speak virtually? It's limiting the number of people who show up because you don't want to hear the commonality of our message. That this plan outside of the Great Configurations is terrible. For no one to stand up and be brave and courageous and say eliminating the option to speak virtually isn't right, it most certainly is a problem. Your seat is rooted in your ability to stand and speak for those who elected you, to be in your position, and yet your handicapped, disabled, non-English-speaking, and people with transportation barriers who probably voted for you can't even come and speak because someone decided that hearing what they have to say is only important if they want to make the effort to come down here. I am trying to wrap my head around publicly saying that the community this and parents that, teachers this and students that, yet this district wants everyone to be involved in this process, and yet your actions show the exact opposite. This is what we call hypocrisy. If the shoe fits where it, just know that we know about how many of you are up for reelection next year, and your actions from this moment forward will be the deciding factor of even being like around long enough to see any plan through. In case you ain't know, it's called accountability. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Geddy Hubbymanna. And our last speaker of the night is Kathleen O'Brien.
Hello. Can you hear me okay? I'm the last person to speak tonight, which is probably good. And I wrote this out basically while I was standing here. I signed up this morning at 11 a.m. because I realized my neighbor couldn't be here to speak. So she asked me to say a couple of things. Her name is Sherri Domroff. She is my neighbor. Her kids go to Spring Hill. She has gone to Spring Hill. She's got about five kids who have gone to Spring Hill. This is a big part of her life. She is concerned about Spring Hill closing and Northview Heights opening. Her biggest concern is that it's happened before, and they had to reopen Spring Hill because it didn't work. Her other concern is getting there. From our part of the neighborhood to get to Northview Heights, the school there, there's no sidewalks again, and it's within the walking distance. So that puts the kids in danger. You also have to go through a gated, like a gate, because the community has restricted access. Why? I don't understand the rationale for opening a school that's in a gated community with limited access. It's not accessible to everyone except for the people in that community. But then they don't get to leave that community, and I don't know what that says. Like, it doesn't make sense to me. There's also a concern about the bridge, the bridge that leads into that community. It has a very restrictive weight limit because it's going to crash if too many cars go over it at any point in time into 279. And that is dangerous. School buses can't go over it. Like, it's just, it's dangerous, period. So that's all I really have to say. I mean, this plan is a bad plan. The solutions that came about still aren't addressing the problems that people in the community need for their kids and for education. Like, closing these schools is not the solution. Limiting kids' ability to get to school is not the solution, especially when we don't have the transportation or the infrastructure in place to do it safely. If we don't have sidewalks, that's a problem. We don't have bridges that can like withstand a school bus? That's a problem. If we don't have reliable transportation, that is a problem. If parents can't walk to the school to get to their kids, they can't be involved in the school. Okay, they can't. I mean, you want us involved at the school level. Maybe not here, but like, you want us involved, and if we can't be, that's a problem. Additionally...
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for your testimony. And then that will complete our testimonies for tonight. We want to thank everyone who testified. And now I will turn this into the hands of Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Ms. Gandy, and thank you to everyone who both was here, came in person to testify, and those who submitted their written testimony. We do, as a board, take this time and your words seriously, as you can see by the six of us that were able to be here tonight. You know, this is an important piece of our overall process of ensuring that folks are heard, that your words are listened to. And we do continue to discuss the many issues and decisions that we have to make coming forward. So thank you all again. I hope you all get home safely. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. We will see you all tomorrow for our Pre-Policy Committee meeting online. Is that not public? Okay, then I take that back. We'll see you Wednesday.